Please rise.
Plenar.
Plenar.
A meeting of the states for America and the interior public for which stands the United States of America in a visible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I call please?
Mrs. Ballinger?
Here.
Deidre Aaron?
Here.
Mrs. Holtz? Mrs. Krishna?
Here.
Mr. Sayers?
Here.
Mrs. Sturgis?
Here.
Mr. Lohr?
Here.
And Mrs. Ferguson?
Here.
All right, I need a motion to approve the regular board meetings from June 23rd.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
A big presentation at court, Mr. Taylor?
Okay, well, we're ready to start the new school year, so we're set, ready to host the entire staff back on the 18th and the 19th. We're ready for our in-service back-to-school professional development. We also just completed our new teacher induction, so we have 10 new teachers within the district. None of those teachers went through the new teacher induction program. We did some of the induction program here in Fairfield, but also partnered with the other Adams County school districts. It was a really good program, which is a great turnout for all the districts. But really excited to have our new teachers onboard. Just wanted to provide a library update on the project down there. Our finishing touch to the library will happen on Thursday, all the new furniture will come. They will completely do all that in one day, so at this point, the flooring is done, the walls have been painted, obviously, the new glass rooms are installed. And the last piece is to do that furniture piece, which it looks really, really nice. So excited to let maybe you guys see that maybe before our next meeting, that way everything will be done, so that everyone can see, you know, how that's coming together. And the last thing is, is obviously on the 20th, we're welcoming all of our students back. So we are ready to welcome, as of today, 880 total Fairfield area school district students back, ready to go, and we are excited to start the new school year, which is amazing how fast the summer has went, but we're ready, so that's it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Taylor, could we do the, um, get with Tom when he comes back and set up? I'd like to, with that library, the new library, I'd like for the board members to see it with the people that are gonna work in that room.
Okay.
Um, so that we can judge what they, you know, ask some questions if we have any, if we could set just like a coffee and, oh.
Okay.
Then we can set.
Perfect, thank you, good idea, Joe.
I think we're all in here to see it.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Wilk, do you have any updates?
I'm gonna review all the work that we've done. The parking lot's been resealed, stadium lights are going in right now, the stage curtains in the auditorium are finished. The greenhouse is been worked on, I think the electrician's coming in a few days to finish the rest of the greenhouse. The fence has been installed along the soccer field. The pavilion in the courtyard is up, it just needs the metal roof put on, probably be done in another day or two, the material's out there. Mr. Taylor already mentioned the library. The scoreboard is being demoed this week, and a new one will be installed next week. We've completed the rekeying of all the outside doors and have replaced all the electronic locks. And then the custodians, they did a great job this summer, they've got all the floor waxing done about a week early, and everything's been cleaned, top to bottom. So we've been, all the projects that we've talked about in here, some from last summer and of those that we talked about in the spring for this summer. All are just about done, the one that didn't get started would be the elementary gym floor. I'll talk to Joe about that, we have some quotes, see when that can be done. Do you know offhand how long it's been since the greenhouse was, been like fully operational condition? I do not know. Okay, so that's exciting. Well, yes, it's gonna, I guess the sensors are being, you know, all the parts are something, so if the temperature gets too high, it'll open up, if it's too cold, it's all gonna be on a thermostat.
So they throw more than lettuce.
Well, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Is the welding room, is that done too, or not yet?
Not quite yet, so we're working on, so part of that is transition to probably a new contractor with the actual teacher of the program. So right now, we're working with both Hack and Hagerstown to see who's going to give us an instructor. Hagerstown wanted to be able to add a few features to it, so we're doing a little bit more work, we're fabricating some of it. But remember, we're not running that till the spring, so we have some more time to do that, so we will redoing just a couple pieces in there. So we'll take everyone on to on that too, because that'd be really nice once it's done too.
And passed on to Joe, I mean, I've driven around and I've been up to the baseball field, this, the baseball field looks better today than it has ever looked in any game we've played. It's the first year we haven't had hay growing up in the middle of it, in the offseason.
So does.
Like, everything you drive around it, this place is nice.
Well, I know Joe has invested in, you know, fertilizer, grass seed, and he's making sure everything's mowed properly, watered properly. So the fields should all be looking really good out there. Yeah, if I remember correctly, I think Joe mentioned the weeds were about, what, 65% grass, was that 35? Now that's pretty much almost reversed from what he was saying, so, and it really shows, the ground's looking more greased, so, it's awesome.
Thank you, thank you for that update, that was a nice update. I will, you know? I do, I will be my, I will do my best to be brief, but I do have a lot of information, because the summer is typically the busiest time for our department in technology. But we are beginning year three of our four-year lifecycle replacement devices for staff and students. So all of our incoming kindergarteners, fifth graders, and ninth graders will receive new Chromebooks that they'll keep with them. The kindergartners through, today matriculates the middle school, middle school, Chahi school, and so forth. So that's taking our time getting those prepared and getting, we've gotten them into the classrooms, which is the earliest we've ever done, so I'm really excited about that. No sleeping in the building this year, this summer. I wanna add on to what we've already talked about, the library space. So once the furniture arrives, we're gonna be able to get all the maker space equipment set up. So we have a core group of teachers that came and got some training on it last week. They learned how to use the one-button studio that is set up in there. And then the laser engraver arrived this week, will, some of them will get some training, they're actually choosing to come in on their own time to learn a little bit more, which is really cool, so they can share that with their peers. The 3D printers will be installed once the furniture is in there as well, so we're working on getting that, getting training done for them. Let's see, Door Access Control Project was a big one for our department, because it connects to the internet, so that was a huge lift. We're still wrapping that up with our contractors. Let me see what else I had written down, we're preparing all of our software programs for the start of school, so we typically can't get those prepared until after course schedules are done. So last Monday, we had course schedules done on August 1st, so last Monday, we started preparing all of our software programs for the year. So we're getting close to having that done. We also, the big ones are the new district website and our Parents' Square Engage platform, communication platform. So we've been able to get all the content rolled over onto the website, train all of our content managers, but we're still working on making sure all the content is updated. We just took what was on the old, moved it over to the new, trained people on how to use the new, and now the heavy lift is making sure that the content is engaging, it changes, it's in locations that's easy to find. And I've had some amazing parents that have sent me emails and say, hey, I can't find this, could you consider adding it here? And that's amazing, so that was nice to have that feedback, because I don't go to the site as they would as parents, so that was great to have some feedback from parents. The Parents' Square Engage platforms, we sent out notifications to all of our families to sign up for the app. Now, the one thing I want to let you know, that if you don't load the app on your phone and don't sign up for it, you still receive all the communications. So just like they did last year, they'll come through email, or they come from text messaging as well, if you choose that as a communication platform. And I'm here to help anybody that needs help with the platform, so if you can't download the app on your phone, you can't get it to work properly, you can't get your kids to tie together. Our families are more than welcome to reach out to our tech team at, well, they can reach out to our tech team with our, I'm trying to think of our support. I think it's IT Support@Fairfield.com, I believe this is the website. So we're happy to help any families that are, that want to download the app that are struggling to do so. We're gonna be at back-to-school nights at all of the buildings with posters, QR codes, anything to help everybody get onboarded that wants to be, so.
Yeah, I actually signed up for that today, and I was confused, because I just entered in my phone number and my email address, and then my son popped up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, is it just pulling that, I mean, obviously through phone numbers and email, they verify that information on the app, it's.
Yeah, it is, yeah, and if you're, let's say you try to sign up, but it's wrong phone number, it'll send us a notification, and then the school secretaries will reach out to the parent, make sure that we have the correct information in Skyward. That's our student information system, so that's where all the data lives. So, yeah, it really is that, that's, it's made to be easy to communicate friendly.
Yeah, it's convenient, yeah, yeah, unless you don't have a phone number or an email address, I don't, you know, then, then they talk to you, I guess, so.
So, and that's also the system that we'll use, we have weather notifications that we use to send out those for delays and closures.
Sure. Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, public comments, I don't believe it's on agenda items, correct?
No.
So then, to our consent agenda, I have A through double A, does anyone have any questions on that?
I have one more question.
Yes.
For A, I just, I know there's so much that goes with that, so are we just approving that it's almost gonna be the exact same thing that got approved last year, or? I'm just curious, I don't know. Like, it's, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know the details of it, but I think it's giving him the ability to be true what he's done to.
Okay.
I don't think there's any changes to it.
Okay.
So like, I know there was questions in the past about parking, like who collected parking, who used the parking lot, is, is, do we know if anyone put in for that, or?
I do, I don't, I can find out.
Find out for? So if that's something that we would like to discuss.
I believe. Yeah, I think the, I think the details are more of a discussion point, this is just giving you the ability to sort of execute that, but I think we can work out the details and still have approval.
I think the biggest issue that I've heard is the fairness piece, because some years, one organization gets it, some years, another one gets it. And it's sometimes perceived as, how do you, how do you get, how do you get to do the parking, or how do you get to do this, and why is it always the same group? And there may be a very logical explanation, but there never, either they don't pursue it, or there has been no explanation.
Yeah, I don't know the historical significance of that, that Mr. Alp know, of what's been discussed, but I'm sure they can follow up with him and get that information. I mean, I'm sure financially, people are looking.
Right, right, that's where, you know, that's where it comes from mainly.
And I think a couple of years ago, we went through that, where everybody was up in arms with, um, FAS doing it, and one, somebody else doing it, push came to shove, FAS were the only ones that had people that would do it. So, it's nice to want the money, but it's also nice to have the people that do the work.
That was kind of where, yeah, I didn't know, like, if some, like, if senior class thinks, okay, we're having, we're just transparent, how is that gonna be, you know what I mean? Based on who's done it before, I wasn't aware, so.
I think it's a good question, I think we just have to get to the.
I wondered that too.
All right, so then, any other questions on A through double A?
I have a question about that. Was, it's the furthering education one?
No.
It's about it? No. Okay.
Okay, all right. We can go through exactly.
Could we?
Yes.
We don't want. Yeah, just so I'll take you through that.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, I mean. Alright, any other questions on A through double A?
I don't think I'm voting.
I'll second.
We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. DeGeneres?
Yes.
Mrs. Krishnan?
Yes.
Mr. Sayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturgis?
Yes.
Mr. Lohr?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ocean here.
I'd like to welcome all of our new teachers and aides and support staff that we just hired, welcome to Fairfield. Other action items or other discussion items, does anyone have anything tonight?
Um, did someone have an update about the football team? Or how the students are doing? With the co-op?
Oh, the football co-op?
I do not have an update, once again, I could provide one for the board, but I don't have an update to provide.
Missy, did you?
Yeah, well, you're so.
Um, just congratulations, or I believe we have four cheerleaders that are going up that made the team in Gettysburg. Currently, I believe there are eleven players that are going up to Gettysburg. Lots of positive comments from the Gettysburg staff about the leadership that Fairfield students are bringing to the team and their athleticism. And I guess I can toothless horn, Lincoln made captain for the varsity football team.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, that's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it deserves a round of applause.
Yes.
There's so much concern about it, so it's gonna be here like something.
Yeah, and it was nice that it was, it's, it was a student voted captain, not coaches, so that was nice.
Piers, yeah, that's really, that's what you want.
Amazing, they're, all, all those kids are gonna feel things that they've not felt in this district.
They're very excited.
So.
And Mrs. Zep, I just had a question, could we get the football skills added to our website?
Absolutely.
Okay.
See that? Just for the Fairfield kids, we're on the news, we're part of that. Oh, yeah, sorry, forgot to mention all that. Their, their little report day. Yeah, they had, we had two media days, I forget what the first one was, but the first one, they had to go and do a hype video. So look for that on ABC twenty-seven, and then one of our former students, Preston Burnett, if you remember, Press? Press and Lincoln are your news anchors, and they're gonna be doing the segments between segments, so like, your news in the next segment, or whatever they said, I don't know. But yeah, so they're on the news, ABC twenty-seven, playing throughout the fall season. One of the Rollins boys and Lincoln were also part of that online media day. Yep.
That's awesome. Oh, that's pretty awesome.
Now, we have public comment, and I have one.
I have one other thing to.
Oh, go ahead.
Ask for. Is there a way we can get a message out to all the seniors that don't know about parking spaces? Decorating their own parking spaces, to give them the opportunity? I feel like it was kind of last minute, I wanna make sure all of them have the opportunity to paint their space if they would like to do it.
And if they can also, along with that, just see why seniors are being asked to pay for their parking spaces, where in years past, it's been a, congratulations, you're a senior, you don't have to pay for your spot, this year they're required to. Yes.
So that was part of the message that was already sent out?
Oh, you've had multiple seniors already have to pay for their spots, yes. In addition to the painting of the spots.
When are they calling the spots, just very.
I think it's, the artwork is due at the end of August, but no painting date has been set.
Yeah, I think they give them, I mean, two weekends?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, I didn't need to, Joe, too quick. Alright, public comment, I have Lily Myers.
I'm Lily Myers, and I just have a few concerns on the volleyball twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six season. Today was considered our first tryout practice, and practice was mostly led by two moms, Nicole Latandre and Erin Murphy. I understand tonight Erin was, Ms. Murphy, was approved to be assistant coach. But as of today, they were taking notes, Nicole and Erin, they were taking notes on the girls' skills on the clipboards. Coach Cal was seen on his phone majority during practice today, and he didn't really interact with us much. The A D was there watching us, taking a few photos. Coach didn't walk out of the gym at the beginning of practice. I don't know what he was doing. My questions are, are the moms cleared to volunteer as of today? And what coach sees and what the moms see can be two different things. So I just wanna know who's making the decisions for the team and who's on the team. That's it.
If you can just give me mom and email address at the end, so that we can get you some information.
Thanks for speaking up.
Thank you.
Good job.
Can I ask a question, how many, I heard there were a ton of kids going out for volleyball, how many?
There were, today, I counted twenty-two, including me. I don't know who's going to show up for tryouts tomorrow, like he did say that today was a mandatory tryout practice on the Facebook website.
Do we know how many is gonna be on the team?
Um, he wants the exact numbers, is what he said at the players meet, the coach meeting that we had last year. He said that you try, is to have the exact numbers, so everyone gets a chance to play, and he doesn't want, so mainly, our teams are twelve for our JV and twelve for varsity, so everyone has a sub and we can all play, so about like twenty-four of us. But there's, I counted twenty-two today, so I don't know who's gonna show up to practice tomorrow.
Well, what, what does he mean by exact numbers, like?
He wants the exact numbers for JV and varsity, so everyone gets a chance to.
Okay, okay.
Last year, they had over, over now.
Twenty, we had twenty-five, so like, one of us would sit out for a game or something. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Anything else I can?
The only other thing I'll say is, I know that the high school boys soccer team is looking for a few more players, if there's anyone out there that has any interest, they should get in contact with Mr. William, the head coach.
I'm a little shocked. That we don't have enough, not that we don't have enough, but that we have, let me put more players.
We have exactly enough.
Exactly enough to fill a team, which is not ideal, soccer, the amount of running that you need, I don't know how many miles you do a game, it's like.
Not saying nobody twists an anchor.
Correct, yeah.
You know how many soccer teams have twelve?
Really?
And they did it, I mean, it didn't work.
That girl's team was crazy.
There were a couple of sketchy.
But it's, I mean, the one game we played, three people down, because of being injured, but.
Well, yeah.
So fingers.
Tell a friend, a more soccer player.
Just throw that out there.
Yeah, never thought I'd be saying that.
Alright, I need a motion to adjourn, then, if nothing else.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.